All right, we're gonna move ahead with our school board workshop. On the agenda, we have a couple of items. First is the district redesign and school improvement update, followed by the educational planning steering committee update. And if we have time, it may be some opportunities for additional board discussion. But we'll go right ahead with the district redesign. Dr. Boone?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. We've talked throughout the year about the action steps that we've been taking to address our district redesign, not just focusing on turnaround of individual schools. That's part of this work, but it was critically important that we think about how does the district align itself for success in ways to better support the schools. We also have a requirement with our MOUs for whichever level of schools, they all have so many different titles. For our schools that we're required to have the MOUs with, then we also provide updates in terms of the work and what's going on. Part of what you will hear during this presentation is the work of the district turnaround partner that we brought in that also supports the priority schools that are required to have a lead turnaround partner. The board will recall that about this time last year, I indicated that we would not be continuing with the lead turnaround partners that were serving our schools because of lack of progress. The board will also recall in the fall when we presented student data that the schools that had lead turnaround partners also had the lowest performance in the district. So it was obvious that that wasn't the path we need to stay on. So Dr. Rogers, Dr. Bailey and I, and members of the academic affairs team have put together for you a presentation to talk about district redesign and school improvement. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Good evening, Mr. Jordan and school board members and Dr. Boone. This afternoon, as Dr. Boone just mentioned, I will present to you just an update on where we are with our district redesign efforts, as well as where we are with our school improvement efforts. And I want to just walk you briefly through how the presentation is structured. First, I'll give a brief background to catch us up to where we've been and to where we are currently, and then provide you with some information with regards to our hashtag MPS redesign focus and our efforts. We'll then remind the board about our schools that are in some level of improvement, as Dr. Boone just alluded to. And I'll speak briefly to the corrective action plan that we have with the Virginia Department of Education with our schools that are in improvement. And then we'll talk a little bit about our district turnaround partner, as Dr. Boone just mentioned, with Focus Schools. That's the name of the company that we're working with. We'll share some data that speaks to our progress that we've made so far this year, formatively. And then we'll talk about our next steps. So first, this work began roughly seventeen months ago when Dr. Boone joined us. And we really got hot and heavy into this idea of district turnaround or district improvement last July. And collectively, we came as a group to celebrate the fifty percent, fifty-one percent of our schools that met full accreditation, up from thirty-nine percent the previous year. We have a lot to celebrate because a lot of hard work has gone into the work that we've done with regards to school improvement. Yet, we do recognize that we still have a lot of work to do. And it's not just those schools who are in improvement, it's all of our schools. Until all of our babies have achieved minimal standards and expectation, we still have work to do. So that is the impetus of some of the work that we're doing this year. We started out having conversations with lots of stakeholders, listening, learning, connecting, and aligning our resources, and finding out what are the things in our district that are working well and what are the opportunities that we have for improvement with regards to creating systems for effectiveness. Those are the key terms that really drive the work that we're doing as it relates to Norfolk Public Schools redesign. One of the most powerful things that I've experienced as being a part of the team in Norfolk Public Schools is when we had, last July, we had all of our district leaders in one room collectively talking about the work. And it wasn't just academic affairs staff. There was folks from Steve's shop, from maintenance, there was transportation, there were finance people talking about the work that has to be done in Norfolk Public Schools. And collectively, given the resources that we had and the information that we collected, we came up with three essential components that were designed to drive the work of the school district. And they are literacy, leadership, and rigor. And they're not mutually exclusive, however, we did decide to focus heavily on leadership. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And I have to give kudos to Chris Hunsinker, who is one of our ITRTs, who designed this logo based on the feedback that we gave him to have something representative of the work that we're doing. If you notice, there are three gears and that they intersect. And when the three gears work simultaneously, the work gets done in a very efficient manner. We still have work to do, and those are the spokes that are outside of the gears themselves. And those are the pieces that we will continue to work on as we go about the work of Norfolk Public Schools redesign. So let's talk a little bit about the schools that are in improvement. Sometimes, we know we have schools that are in improvement. Sometimes, we forget where they are improving. So I just want to remind the board that we do have fifteen schools that are denied. We have four that are partially accredited as a result of being reconstituted. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We have two that are partially accredited and one that's in their third year of being warned. Of the fifteen schools that are credited, that are denied accreditation, we have four that are identified as what's referred to as Focus Schools. And a Focus School is a Title I school within the bottom ten percent in the state. And a priority school is one of the five percent, is in the bottom five percent in the state. We have four each that are denied. Actually, we have five priority schools. One of them is not denied, and I'll talk about that school in just a minute. But as you can see, those are the fifteen that we've paid very close attention to this year without neglecting the others. So of the four reconstituted schools, we have one of which Chesterfield Academy is considered a priority school. And again, those four schools apply for reconstitution to the Virginia Department of Education. They have to vote on it. They look at the data from the previous year. In order to be considered a reconstituted school, you have to meet one, at least one of four criteria, which could be a change in the leadership in the school, it could be a change in the student population, something significantly different with the instructional program, or a change in the student population. So each of those four schools met at least one of those criteria. Chesterfield is highlighted, and we know that we have a different leadership at that school. And they're doing very well. I've kind of chosen one school to kind of highlight some of the things that we've done this year with school improvement.
And if I can, with the Chesterfield piece, what allowed the state to grant partially accredited, reconstituted status for that school was not only that we had new leadership, but we had leadership with a proven track record of success in another school that was turned around. And so that's why they granted us that.
The two schools that are partially accredited are due to English. And they are Booker T. Washington High School and Granby Elementary School.
And Booker T., one point.
One point. And then the one school that we have that's in their third year warned for English is Northside Middle School. So that's just a snapshot of where we are with our twenty-two schools that are in some level of formalized improvement as it relates to the state. But again, because we're taking a district-wide approach to school improvement, we're looking very closely at how we support all of our students, all of our students at all of our schools, even if they aren't fully accredited. So with regards to the Virginia Department of Education and the corrective action plan and reconstitution agreements, we met collectively with members of the State Department and created the document, the corrective action plan in and of itself. And what it says is that we agreed to four essential actions in order to help the schools that are needing the most support get better. The first of which is to develop a pre-K through twelve literacy plan. We already started that work. We started that work essentially when I got here. And that work is well underway. We have a fantastic partnership with the College of William &amp; Mary, the CERN Network, School University Research Network, and Dr. Cataldo and his staff are leading that work. And you can expect an update on the progress of that in one of your upcoming meetings. Leadership development and coaching. Again, as Dr. Boone said, we had several lead turnaround partners working with five of our schools, and they took a very different approach that looked very closely at the teacher. The manner in which we're approaching district-wide leadership is to focus on what we think matters most, and that's leadership. You know, research says that in any successful organization, you can look to its leaders to determine how successful those organizations are. So we're focusing quite a bit on leadership development and coaching. We have some very seasoned leaders that are in the district at the school level and as well as at the district level. However, leaders are notorious for not participating in professional development themselves because they feel that they have to do much of the delivering. So it's been refreshing to have such a focus on developing the leaders within the context of our organization. And the third essential action is to implement and monitor a rigorous curriculum. And I'd like to direct your attention to three words in that action: implement, monitor, and rigorous. And you'll hear us use those words intermittently throughout the course of the year next year. Lastly, is to initiate, implement, and monitor the development of a district-wide focus. What we found in our look, listen, and learn tour last year, we had some great things in place in Norfolk Public Schools, but we had a lot of opportunities for improvement because there were just a lot of things going on. And some of the things didn't necessarily mesh with each other. So part of the essential action with that one is to make sure that we have alignment and that the pieces fit together, and that everyone knows what everyone else is doing. And there's a streamline of communication that's taking place so that we can grow and get better together. So when we put out an RFP for our lead turnaround partner, not just to work with our priority schools, but we were charged with finding a way in which we could get a turnaround partner that would work with the entire school district. And that vendor that we're working with is Focus Schools. And it's almost like having another subset department within the scope of our school district that we can look to to provide guidance and direction and structure to the work that we're doing. So it's been a fantastic partnership. We've had many opportunities to dialogue about the work, and I'm excited about it. This is a graphic that was shared with us at one of our first meetings with the, what we refer to now as the district leadership team. It used to be called, we used to refer to it as cabinet. And the district leadership team is more synonymous with what we're trying to accomplish in terms of being a results-based system. So if you direct your attention to the right of the screen, we had some conversation about the organization not being aligned. There were good things in place, but maybe not necessarily working in the same direction. The ultimate goal of our work with Focus Schools, and with each other for that matter, is to create a results-based system where things are aligned, where you have an opportunity to refer to a common framework that everybody knows and understands. And when I say everybody, I mean everybody that gets a paycheck in Norfolk Public Schools and is able to follow the framework that we're undergoing. So that's our ultimate goal, is to shift from the right to the left. And I think in one of our IOT meetings, or maybe it was a principals meeting last month, I intermittently asked, you know, the principals, where do you think we are on this continuum? And most of them felt that we were right smack dab somewhere in the middle. We had some that felt we were still over in the right, which gives us pause for consideration in how we do our work. But for the most part, our ultimate goal is to travel more toward the left on this continuum.
And let me comment about this particular slide. This is one of those things that has stuck with me for about the last eight to ten years. When you think about the descriptors under the non-aligned system, where balls are different sizes, things are going in different directions, it says projectitis and initiative fatigue, so always chasing something. Silos and competing departments. And the board will remember some of the things that I've talked about in terms of my early assessment in the district. Dollars and programs are power, not improvement, okay? So we had a lot of those, a lot of different things. And sometimes, schools didn't know what was on first. Climate of command, control, and compliance, or the rugged individual, survival mentality. So any of us who watched the initial reality show of Survivor, what did I do to make sure I survived? An aligned and results-driven system is about a common framework, as Dr. Rogers said, and how are we focusing our work. And so I hope that the board will commit this slide to your memory, to your thinking, because it doesn't happen overnight, but this is the journey that we're on to really move from a non-aligned system with lots of things going on, with no connection to either the work or the results, to one that we're all running in the same direction. Doesn't mean that you will go into a building and in a classroom and you see scripted instruction and every activity is exactly the same. But rather, we, as described here, are sharing a framework, a way of thinking about our work. We're well into our planning for our summer leadership institute as the district leadership team has been doing this work. And so come this summer and late and early fall, we'll be sharing some other places of where we are with some of this work. But this, I ask us to commit to our thinking as we go forward.
This leads me to the next slide, if it'll... I have a frozen thing there. Janelle, would you mind advancing, please? Thank you.
No.
There we go. So when we met as a district leadership team initially to decide how we were going to go about this district-wide work, and the work really began heavily in October when Focus Schools came on board, we approached it from, almost like an octopus, from eight different areas, with the district leadership team being the center of where the leadership would take place. We focused on principals, assistant principals, school-based instructional leadership teams where teachers had an opportunity to sit at a table with the principal and assistant principal and other leaders in the building to help make instructional decisions that not only affected them, but affected all the students in their building. Priority and Focus Schools, executive coaching, the academic affairs team, that includes myself, as well as members of our team. Student-focused coaching, which focuses on providing professional development for the coaches in individual buildings. And then we frame that around the context of the leadership. And of course, as was mentioned in one of the previous meetings, we use the book switch as a hook to the change that needs to take place in our school district. So one of the action steps that we have to take as part of our corrective action plan is to create a district-wide focus. And that district-wide focus is referred to as a theory of action, which suggests that you not only have something on a piece of paper, but you have to do something in order to actualize it. So we spent the better part of this year as a district leadership team developing our theory of action. And I will tell you that in this room, there has been some knockdown dragouts in terms of what your beliefs are and how hard you want to fight for your department. But what it has forced us to do as a team is to really think about the whole and not the parts. And it has taken us from October until last week, and I see lots of heads nodding, to come to an agreed-upon focused mission statement that we are willing to stand by and say, this is what we are going to commit to, to our community. And at an appropriate time, Dr. Boone will certainly share that with the board, as well as with our other stakeholders. But I'm extremely proud of the work that the team has done. I know I've gotten on nerves, and I'd like to say publicly to those that are in this room that we certainly appreciate your work with it. I'm proud of the project.
Thank you for not saying I was the one doing the knocking and the dragging.
Well, inadvertently...
I know they were sick of me, too.
Well, the meeting before last was a little hairy, but anyway. We got a lot accomplished, and it took quite a bit of time to do so. So our next step, steps in that work, is to create action steps around this statement that all of our departments are going to agree upon and that all of the persons within those departments, including schools, will agree upon and know and be able to do. And again, anybody in Norfolk Public Schools that has a check written out to them on a bi-monthly basis would be able to know and understand and the theory of action that we agreed upon. So what are we doing as a district leadership team? What's our big focus? Of course, and I'll go a little bit out of order. We talked about the defining our district focus or the theory of action. And we have a collective understanding that we have our jobs to support schools. And the only people that are here optionally are us. The kids have to be here, nobody else really does. So we have to know and understand that we have to work collaboratively together and that our role is to support schools. And I'm saying that there's not that understanding, but truth be told, there are some in our organization that may not have that level of understanding, that their role is not just about their work, it's about the district as a whole, and to define essential components of our work. So that's what we've been spending our time on as a district leadership team, in addition to developing our literacy model, which is taking the better part of two years to create a good, solid model that we can feel good about. That's not just applicable to those who teach reading or English, but eventually will be applicable across our content levels. So it's a big four areas. The differentiated leadership development is with priority and Focus Schools. Those, no pun intended, are our priority, focusing on those schools that need the most support. And then we have our bubble schools. And we must not forget that last year, I believe, we had thirteen schools who were in there, third year warned. I can't remember the exact number. Of those thirteen, we had six who met full accreditation, some of which just made full accreditation. So we can't rest on our laurels of that. We have to make sure that we're providing support for them. And Focus Schools has helped us shape a framework with which we can do that, and they've been tremendous with that. As a matter of fact, I don't think we had enough time built in for those schools who recognize that they can require additional support and who have readily asked, some of the schools that you would not even think would have asked for some additional support with their leadership team. So it's been very helpful in that regard. I briefly wanted to touch on the framework that we're using. And then neither one of these focus frameworks are mutually exclusive, and the teams have been working on them collectively and intermittently. The first of which is to identify and implement a school-wide instructional focus. Dr. Boone mentioned that first slide where the bubbles are kind of all over the place. You could go to any school and ask four or five different staff members, what's the instructional focus? And you may get four or five different answers. I challenge you to go in any school tomorrow and ask what their instructional focus is. You should get the same answer from every adult in that building because of the work that they've done from October through now.
And it's not done in isolation. It's the teams coming together. So you begin to build capacity through the building and scale this by the fact that it's not just the principal receiving professional development, going back to the school to share it, but you have people at the table developing work together.
So what's the question we ask?
What's your instructional focus? What's your instructional focus?
Okay. I'm gonna tweet it out.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm looking forward to it. The second one is to develop professional collaborative teams that not only consist of the principal, assistant principal, and your instructional leaders, but it's expanding the scope of the team to include teachers. And what's been refreshing is that at each meeting, it's not always been the same teacher. They send different teachers to get the professional development and to get an idea or snapshot of what it's like to be a leader and to be able to make some decisions. And surprisingly enough, we had some of our schools that did not have a breadth of instructional staff on their teams. It was sometimes just the principal and assistant principal. So that's been an eye-opening experience for us as well. The third one is to identify, learn, and use, and I emphasize "use," effective, evidence-based teaching practices. In other words, what are we spending our time on in terms of teaching teachers how to be better at their craft and really taking some time to dig into what an effective, research-based teaching practice is? Creating targeted professional development plans. I got really excited last week, at the very last IOT meeting for the year, I randomly asked a teacher, who I thought was a teacher, she ended up being a math specialist, what she thought about the meetings. And she told me that the biggest benefit for her, this is not on camera, but the biggest benefit for her was to take time and to sit down and to begin drafting their professional development plan through December of next year. And they weren't doing it over the summer, that they had some good ideas about what they would do. Aligning resources. We've spent a lot of time aligning resources, human, financial, and instructional resources. And that work will certainly continue, but we anticipate being able to do more with aligning resources next year. Engaging families and not just involving families. And then lastly, creating an internal accountability system. In other words, making sure that we are doing what we say we're going to do. Because sometimes, that's left a chance when you create a plan. A plan is only as good as it's being implemented. So those are the focus framework that are in line with the turnaround principles that are federally accepted. The other two, literacy and rigor, are embedded in everything we do. So again, we're not treating these two pieces in isolation, that they will be embedded in all that we do with regards to leadership. I chose one school to tell a story of the work. And I'll start with Chesterfield being one of our reconstituted schools, who happens to be a priority school. But this is an example of what an instructional focus is. And they have that graphic that goes along with it. And it's, I'm a cheater reader. And at Chesterfield Academy, every student should know what I'm a cheater reader means and what their instructional focus is. In fact, I was assured that they all know, and that if I came into every classroom, I'd see evidence of that graphic and that every adult and every kid would be able to communicate to me what their instructional focus is. That's but one example of many, if not all, that are available. Now, some schools are in different places and are on the continuum of this work, and I think that's okay. I'm an impatient gardener, and I'm constantly reminded that things can't happen overnight as it relates to school improvement. However, you do have checks and balances along the way to make sure that people are at least moving on the continuum. The support that schools are provided by the turnaround partner Focus Schools, I'll list it there, and I mentioned them earlier. I wanted to direct your attention to student-focused coaching. I've been around a long time. This is my twenty-fifth year in education and probably been a leader for eighteen of those years. I've heard a lot of things. One of the things that I have not mastered yet is the idea of student-focused coaching. And we have a lot of coaches and people offering support to teachers and support to students. So to have experts be able to show all of our instructional leaders and coaches how to properly run student-focused coaching is a win-win situation. And again, I randomly asked a teacher, how, on the way out, they were packing up, you can see folks in the background of the video I'm about to show you, what she thought about the meeting she had. And ironically, she shared her thoughts about student coaching. So I want to just share with you what her thoughts were. I hope it runs up. Uh-oh. Can you, would you be able to hear that?
I think I have to enter.
Is it not working? I'm sorry? Okay.
I think these meetings really helped me grow as a leader, especially when Keith came to our school. He showed us the different coaching strategies that some we had been implementing, but we didn't know the names of, and others that we had never even heard of. So I'm really kind of excited to see where that's going to go in the future. And he said he's going to come back and model for us, the coaches, the reading specialist, the math specialist, to see how we're going to implement some of the strategies that we didn't know previously into our everyday coaching experiences.
So in addition to the support that we're providing them at the district level, they are having some intense support with regards to how they provide coaching to the...
To the other teachers, yeah.
To the other teachers in their building.
But with a focus on student learning.
One of the other things that came as an outcome of our work with developing leaders is the principal preparation program, and we affectionately refer to it now as PQ. What we noticed last year was that the pool of applicants for principal leaders lacked certain skill sets as it relates to urban education. So what better way to address that issue rather than prepare your own people to be what you need them to be? So we have PQ, and it's a leadership opportunity for our aspiring assistant principals in order to gain knowledge in key urban leadership areas. And some of you all attended the Council of Gray City Schools Conference last October. And I attended several sessions where they talked about similar programs. And I was able to network with some colleagues there and get some information. But Focus Schools really helped us shape what that... But focus schools really helped us shape what that could become. And we got it started a little later than I would have liked, but the hardest part about doing anything is getting started. We started in March and it's been very successful. Dr. Gray is leading that work. We started with eleven participants who had to submit applications. They were vetted and all were accepted. They will have their fourth meeting June first with regard, and they're just a ball of excitement about the opportunities that they've experienced. And it's just been quite refreshing to have them discuss about their own personalized professional development. They had a homework assignment and the homework assignment was to pose a question to a sitting principal or a central office staff member to ask them about leadership. One of the questions that they were asked was in reference to the work centered around the instructional leadership teams. And I don't have a whole, I won't read them all to you. I'll just pick one. And we have several principals who provided responses to the eleven asked for. So I'll read the one from the high school principal. It's the shortest. "It has allowed for a system of accountability and monitoring instructional practices to ensure," and I stress to ensure, "that the school improvement plan is actually being implemented." Again, the hard part about having a plan is actualizing it and making sure that it happens and making sure that it's monitored and that you go back to it frequently and often. But those are three of the examples that our aspiring principal leaders have shared with us. Now, our support to our schools from the district level, we've not changed anything. If anything, we've revisited some of the things and ramped up some of the things that were working that we saw gains from with regards to training on our data use, with regards to the support that we provide from all of our district administrators, specialists, RTI specialists, and things of that nature. We do continue to provide monthly district-level support to our denied schools at their instructional leadership team meetings so they have a direct resource aligned to school admin. The Title I training that schools have been participating in has been designed to help them align their resources with their actual need and data, and that has been tremendous with that. And then when we talk about how do we monitor this work, we've gotten some fantastic accolades from focus schools. They work with quite a few school districts, some large school districts. And we have, it's a really simple system that we use a Google space to refer, to house documents so that we can all see them. It's called a NAB, the Norfolk Administrator's Briefcase. So after every instructional leadership training, there are always next steps that the executive directors help to monitor. In other words, we've gone through this training, what are you going to agree as a leadership team to do absent this training prior to the next time that we come back together and how do we ensure that that happens? Each school has a folder, they upload their next steps. We have access to it. So does every other school. So if I'm a school and I'm struggling in reading, I know this school is doing well, I can go and look at their next steps and get some ideas and if I want to ask them some questions. And again, we have different schools that are different places on the continuum. And some of them are rocking, others of them may need a little coercing. And I do fuss a little bit when I see stuff that's not in there and we go to the night and then it shows up the next day and then we can have some conversation about that. But in essence, that's how we monitor how the work is getting done and hold each other accountable.
And this idea of monitoring what the follow-through from one session to another or from one professional development opportunity to the other, as much as I pushed on to state that they don't have a strong turnaround model, this was a consistent message that we heard about Norfolk, that we would participate, but there was never anything, the follow-through didn't occur at the central office or many building levels. And so that was critically important for us to capture that.
So in essence, from the district level, we're still doing the things that we saw being effective last year with regards to helping, assisting with lesson plans, providing model lessons, modeling, instruction, and things of that nature. Now, with regards to data, what are the numbers that we can associate with all of the training that we've had this year since literally August up until now? And if you'll remember, we trained all of our K one-two teachers, I think it was some four hundred teachers, on guided reading practices. It's not necessarily an instructional strategy, but...
But let me just share. I saw the board looking at their, these slides are here. We will update what you've received, but we want to make sure we had the core of the presentation posted by Friday and so now we've infused addition, the data points.
Okay. So now I'll speak slower so y'all digest it. The literacy progress is associated right now with our K one-two. And if you'll remember, as I just said, share, we provided professional development over three days with our, all of our K one-two teachers, including those who teach special education on guided reading. And the progress that you'll see is housed in what we call our e-portfolio. It's a data warehouse that all of our schools have access to. And in that data warehouse, we have D R A or developmental reading assessment data, developmental spelling assessment data, PALS data, which includes phonological, excuse me, letter recognition, sounds, and spelling. And all of those pieces of data help us to determine whether students are reading at or above grade level, of course, or below grade level. So what you see in the chart below is in that first column, in two thousand sixteen in kindergarten, we had seventy-seven percent of our students reading at or above grade level at that moment in time. This year, we have eighty percent, which we experienced a three percentage growth. And with first grade, we've seen a four percent growth and with second grade, a seven percent growth. So can we attribute this growth solely to the professional development that the teachers have had? Maybe not causation, but it's certainly, we believe that there's some correlation related to the training that they, they have received so far this year. And the fact that we are monitoring reading instruction very closely and carefully through all parts.
Just for clarity, so you said this is district-wide data, it's not necessarily the fifteen or so schools or the twenty or so schools we...
Right, this is district-wide. These are all of our schools together.
Do you want us to hold our questions till the end?
Yeah, y'all can...
We almost, we've got to accelerate, one more slide and then we'll be ready for questions.
Chanel, Chanel, would you help me out? Thank you. Our division one, district benchmark assessment, our D B A progress. We have data for English in grades three through eight and math in grades three through eight as well. And as you can see, our English data shows an increase in proficiency rates for grades three. However, it does not show proficiency for grades four and five. Okay, for grade four, the proficiency rate is pretty much flat at eighty-four percent. And grade five, there was a five percent decline in the benchmark assessments at that moment in time. And I'll remind the board that district benchmark assessments are formative in nature and give you a pictorial idea or a snapshot in time and assesses what kids know and are able to do based on what was taught. So it gives us an idea about what needs to be ret, retired and what kids have mastered. With mathematics, the benchmarks show some decline in elementary levels at the third, fourth, and fifth grade. For sixth grade, there is a decline of eight percent and an increase of two and eighteen percent respectively in grades seven and eight. And these data are used by our teacher specialists to have conversations with the I O T to talk about what are the things that went well, what are the opportunities for improvement, and how can we assist you in helping kids master the skills that they did not master as indicated on the benchmark assessments? So we see some gains and of course, this gives you an overall snapshot and certainly not school-specific as that data would be different from one school to the other. And those schools where kids are meeting with difficulty are where we have been focused, where we have been focusing our efforts of providing intense support. So as it relates to numerical data, these are the data that we have available to us. Of course, you know that we are hot and heavy into S O L testing now. So we should see the fruits of our labor. You don't, you know, put all your eggs in one basket for S O L assessment. That's one means of assessing student success, but nevertheless, that's the measure that we have right now. We are planning, I think hope is not a strategy. We are planning deliberately for the success of our students and expecting great outcomes.
And we know that the, the numbers, you know, for it might be a gasp, but again, two, three percentage point difference from the prior year. In most cases, it's probably not statistically significant. But again, I think what we, what is encouraging, we aren't taking double-digit dives because we looked at some data over time where you could see significant fluctuation. And of course, we look at this by individual schools and that's what we use in terms of the coaching and support for schools as well as their, their focus, their instructional focus and what they need to do to align professional development. How are they using the data to drive what they're doing versus using a program that's expected to work across or be the panacea, rather. This is about what do we need to do as adults to be able to address what the student data revealed to us in terms of progress?
So the last slide I have, a positive, one of our next steps, based on our evaluations after every professional development session, session, whether it's with principals, assistant principals, instructional leadership teams, priority schools, focus schools. We have them doing evaluation from that session and we look at every evaluation. We physically touch each one with our lead turnaround partner and have some discussion about what things went well, what questions were asked, and how do we plan for the next session to go around? And that has helped to shape our professional development for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, which we've already sent out dates. If not today, we will send them out tomorrow so that principals can plan appropriately. So we feel pretty good about it and I know it was a lot of information, but I certainly will entertain questions and my team is here to answer any questions that I may not readily know the answer to.
Bye, Gabriel.
Sure. Thanks. This was a very comprehensive overview and I do appreciate it. I had a few questions. On the chart that you discussed, the kindergarten and the first and second grade evaluation. The kindergarten numbers are really high as compared to the first and second grade. Is, are we evaluating kindergarten? It's on page one.
Third from the left hand.
Yeah. Are we evaluating the kindergarten literacy rate through PALS? Or is there another mechanism? Because over, over the past few years, I know we've had conversation about PALS not being the most up-to-date, current way of evaluating what the rigor is for literacy now. So are we just seeing that the kids are soaring through PALS? And then by the time we get to first grade, it's, there's a lot more rigor that's in place?
Remember, PALS is a limited set, letter recognition, sounds, and spelling. So phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, what does that look like? So we pair that and I'll look to, to Gwen or Dr. Bailey to talk about what we pair with in kindergarten to know.
We also get the D R A in kindergarten and that, I think what you need to look at too is there's a dip in, from kindergarten to first grade because those kindergartners are emerging readers. So they're...
Couldn't get away from it.
I couldn't get away from it. I'm sure you did.
Um, the kindergartners are emerging readers. So they are, they're expected to be in an independent D R A level four when they leave kindergarten. And as you can see, at this point in time, eighty percent of our kindergartners are at that point. We just raised that level two years ago. It was an independent D R A level two, or three, two years ago. First graders are expected to be on a D R A level eighteen. So when you get to first grade, you're going through about nine reading levels. And that's, I always feel like there's going to be a, there's a flip of a, of a reading switch when students get to kinder, to first grade. So I, I, you know, I, that's where our students are now. And I think that we have, we've looked at the benchmarks using suggestions from D R A, from PALS, where they expect students to be reading at certain times of the year and put that, those are in place in e-portfolio.
Okay. My next question is regarding the next steps. If you know, if you know that you have a cohort of students, be it by grade level or be it by school in particular, that are struggling with reading or math and they're getting ready to graduate to the next level, be it fifth grade to sixth grade or eighth grade to ninth grade. Now that you guys are having the dialogue with the district leadership team, are you allowing the school who will be receiving those students to have plenty of planning time and allow their teachers and staff to be aware of what those needs are of the students so that nothing is lost, but they're going to continue to gain on the progress that has been made within that building?
One, one of the things that, that we do in this focus work is recognizing that it's not assessment just for assessment's sake. And so what do we know about how strong students are? One of the things we do is look at the success of students when they go from elementary school into middle or middle into high school. What are the strengths? What are the challenges? What are the, the pieces of the curriculum that will continue to build upon other pieces and what's brand new? And so while we really don't do a one-for-one staffing in the medical model, when you change shifts, you staff each patient, we don't do the one-to-one, one-for-one staffing model. But because we're all focused on the instructional piece, we now can begin to have the conversations about what's the instructional focus from a school that's in my feeder pattern, going to a middle school. This is putting us right in line to be able to, as a next step, have these, what we call the vertical conversations and not just the conversations about being in buildings. Before, it would have been, we, we don't know what the conversation would have been. And you know, we've talked before as a governor's team about even our parent schools. And while the, the grade level changes were made, that pairing around the instructional conversation that should feed all students K through five or pre-K through five was what wasn't put in place. We now are doing that not only for our parent schools, but will be what the conversations look like going forward. We're, again, early on in our planning for our summer leadership institute, but that's a place where feeder schools can sit together and talk about their instructional focus. What do we know about the strength of the class that's coming? What are some areas that we still feel they need support in going forward? So we can talk about it in a global sense and not necessarily the one-for-one student conversation.
Thank you.
Whacker?
A couple of things. From the beginning, you said you got with the stakeholders. Who are the stakeholders that you all got to develop the, to begin the whole process?
With the schools.
Except with all the schools?
Right. The stakeholders for us are the folks who are doing it closest to the students each and every day. We had to start somewhere. So in my first seven months here, we began to focus in central office. We then expanded that focus beginning last April and really moving it into it with a, a sense of earnestness, urgency last July. And so, but what is different in what we were doing or what the district had been doing is stopping with the principals. So it used to be conversations around school improvement with the principals, with central office, but never anyone from the schools. When we talk about the stakeholders, we started bringing the teachers into the conversation so that they are part of the development of a school's instructional focus. They are part of the development of the professional development plans and the plans for monitoring the progress.
The coaches, the coaches were, what's, coaches were for the principals and then you had to, I didn't, I guess I really didn't understand the student coaching model. I had a question about what, what is that? How does it work or?
Different school, schools have instructional coach, they have instructional specialist math and reading specialist. They have staff who work with, exclusively with students and they also have staff that work exclusively with teachers. Sometimes they intermix the two. The student...
The student coaching model teaches them strategies that help them work better with teachers who are working with students so that they're not doing the job of the teacher. That they're coaching them on, on instructional practices and...
Can you say that again?
Yeah, so let, let me, let me reframe it.
Okay.
The focus of the work, while it is building capacity of the adults to better serve students, the conversation when we talk about student-focused coaching is about what does a student need and how do we have the adult conversations around what a student needs in order to deliver the appropriate instructional supports? And coaching gets confused as we talk about it because for us, our math and reading specialists who are geared towards supporting teachers are in a form of coaches. Some school districts call them coaches. But to the other portion of the question that you had, Ms. Wagner, we do talk about some coaching that's directly for principals in terms of how do they connect the dots in their leadership to move the needle and to get their teams wrapped around this work, to, to lead the work and yet to release authority to those teachers to be able to guide this work, some of this work themselves.
So these were not the coaches that you all brought in to work with the, I mean, because I know you...
They are the math and reading specialists that we are talking about.
Okay.
Right, so we use that interchangeably with coaches in this.
Okay, 'cause I'm thinking about the coaches that you all hired to work with the new principals, those kind of things.
No, no, but there is, so, so, apologize for the confusion.
Okay.
When we're addressing our math and reading specialists, we're, those are some of our embedded coaches in the school building. So we call those coaches. But then there was direct leadership coaching that was for principals, particularly principals in priority and focus schools, and focus schools so that, again, helping them build their, their capacity to be stronger instructional leaders, connecting all of the dots and not the building managers and, and to, to connect the work in a way that we can begin to see incremental progress and sustained progress.
One other question, the family engagement. Exactly how does that, how does that work?
Well, to be honest, we have not dug as deep into the family engagement this year. That is on the horizon for next year. We spent the majority of our time focusing on identifying what the instructional focus is and research-based best practice. And we wound up the school year with them planning their professional development based on the instructional focus and the best practices. With regards to the family engagement, we'll have some conversation about what that looks like and planning with focus schools. We have a meeting scheduled next week, so I'd be better able to answer that to you. But next year, because the work has to continue, will be us talking about family engagement, aligning our resources and identifying the manner in which we're gonna monitor what we decide upon.
And, and let me add to that. Because of my experience both with focus schools and how we approach turnaround, the idea is that the school then has a message to engage the family in terms of understanding the approaches to teaching and learning that will be happening in their school. For, for parents to understand, when we, when a school has as a, as an instructional focus, the school may have justification as an instructional focus, meaning students can't just find answers. They have to be able to talk about how they've reached those answers and to justify their, their responses. Because when you can justify, then you have the deeper content knowledge that is, prepares you for the next part of the content. When we begin to do, you may think about things such as we, we've often had SOL family nights where you talk about some content. This is when you will begin to see conversations and engagement with families and parents around the instructional focus and what they're doing and how parents can help support the instructional focus in their work at home. Some schools are already at that level. This work will deepen it. Others will, will begin that. So it's not a math or, or reading SOL night for the sake of math and reading and for the sake of the test, but really about how do we help our, how can families help our children learn more deeply? And that's what begins to bring in the rigor piece in, in all of this.
Okay, I, I, you know, that's an important piece and, and I'm just thinking about when you start looking at different neighborhoods and, and how do you address that plan to fit?
Well, again, first and foremost, we're not building instruction for a neighborhood. We're building instruction for all children. So it doesn't matter where you live, but there are ways in which we connect with the families. We have to be successful in connecting with the families and getting their minds. I mean, obviously, the language that I'm using today would not be what I would ask a principal to do and how to present in terms of a, a community engagement piece.
And you said the correct, the word that I, the, the connecting and that's, that's the piece that I'm, you know, that I'm dealing with in terms of the family engagement. I understand we're not trying to, you know, that we're educating children, but in terms of family engagement, we do have to connect.
We're gonna tailor that. Each school, and this is where, again, that authority that's at the building level. Each principal knows this school community better than anyone in central office would, unless they worked in that particular school and in that community. And therefore, we, the, the expectation for the principals is to build a robust system of family engagement around the instructional focus and what's going on, but to tailor it in a way that it is true and authentic engagement that, that brings the families in, keeps them connected to the work and gets them excited about what's going on and also gives them a point of accountability. Because guess what? Once we put it out there, parents are gonna expect us to deliver on it. And so this is, this is how you begin to put it out there. But we had to have something to put out there with them first and so...
That's, that's a good component, but it's a hard component.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And necessary.
Making the rounds, Ms. Posey.
I'm sorry.
So I had similar question, I think, around the student-focused coaching, what it looks like. So knowing that we're talking about math and reading specialists too, are we, how, how is this coaching, how are we working with or for our students with disabilities? What kind of coaching is in, is there specific coaching or positions in place?
I'll start and let, let Kip chime in. What we're building is for all students. Special education, our students with disabilities, what are the additional supports and system of accommodations that are necessary? You've heard me talk about how do we make sure we're using the core curriculum and standards as instructional input versus intervention? To avoid intervention becoming the core and also for students with disabilities, this is a whole school conversation about how do we deliver grade level content at a, at a place, excuse me, where all students can be successful? And then what happens? How do we support our gifted students through differentiation? Not so that everybody's at the same place because gifted students are ready to accelerate and, and, and move on. And our students with disabilities may need support in mastering what's going on there. And so this is about taking the focus away from interventions being the, the primary input to the core instructional program being the primary input and everything else being the system of support. What I have seen in my experience in Worcester and even in Norfolk before, when we have a strong delivery of the core, we see all children rise. And that is well documented.
Right. But I guess I was thinking in terms of strategies specific to meet the needs of students.
Again, that's, that's the place where special education teachers begin to talk about what's in the student's IEP. What are best practices, practices around supporting, for example, decoding of, if a child has a, a, a challenge with their learning disability, that sounding out the individual sounds in a word won't work for them. So how do we teach them greater sight words? What are the strategies that we teach them? That should be going on there regardless of this work. But what this work does then is also help the special education teachers be focused on the core and how they support the core. Moving away, think about that, that aligned and non-aligned system. Non-aligned system talks about silos, so special ed for special ed's sake, core content for general ed's sake. Gifted for gifted. We're moving away from that, not from the system of support, but the conversation that in an aligned system, the core curriculum is for everyone. And then we support success around that.
Okay.
And then the work that we've done this year is to expand the scope of what we refer to as tier-one instruction, the first time students are taught. If they don't know and understand it, then you do something different. But the expectation is that you teach the first time well to the student's level with a certain level of rigor at the same time. So in terms of coaching, the coaching is teaching teachers how to embed best practices and also to embed rigor with regards to what they're supposed to be teaching. And to a point where you try to get at least eighty percent of your students to understand what they were taught the first time that it was taught. And that does include students with disabilities based on their IEPs. More often than not, you may find, more than past years, you have a collaborative setting where you have a general education teacher and a special education teacher. In an ideal situation, you should be able to go in a classroom and not be able to determine who the special education teacher is because the student with disability has access to the regular curriculum and not necessarily something different, but you're teaching them at their ability level.
And then, you know, from a board perspective, then what are, to put this plan into place the way you want it, what are the budget implications? As you would say, the impact statement of...
The return on investment. The biggest piece for us, and you recall in the budget that I presented to the board, we talked about some focus areas, some, some things that we had to accomplish with the budget and one of them was professional development. This is district-wide work in terms of this redesign, all schools, not just prioritizing focus schools. So how do we make sure we have the resources to support those schools that may not have the federal school improvement grants with them? How then do we build Title I plans, special education support plans for PD and system of support for students and gifted students in a way that we're able to blend and extend funds to allow us to reach all of the students and not just those who fall under the federal accountability system? Because for me, this is about redesigning this district to turn around so that we aren't making a bump in scores one year and don't have a, a means of sustaining that for the future and then we're right back where we started. But this is about the deeper work that creates a level of sustainability to keep the work moving. Each year that I am afforded the opportunity to lead this work with Norfolk, you're gonna see us deepening this work, not going wider. We're gonna continue to drill down in each aspect of this work until we have such deep roots that the wind doesn't blow and take us off course. Doesn't mean we aren't gonna tweak and make adjustments, but this is what we're focused on and that's what we're gonna continue to do in, much more deeply. And like you said, and we begin to see that progress that not only is, occurs incrementally over time, but is able to be sustained. That's the critical piece.
Yeah, and I'll defer, yes, in the interest of time.
All right, Ms. Doyle?
So I see the data here from K to eight. Do you have any data related to high schools?
We did a sampling of this data, of these data for the, the purpose of this work. Certainly, we have the data and, you know, during our summer data dive with the board, we'll be talking more about what we know about our progress.
And also to, just to add, with high school, high school, their assessments, they have some bounded autonomy this year and the bounded autonomy is that they created their own assessments in-house and those assessments were reviewed by our senior coordinators in conjunction with the department chairs and their principals to determine their progress over time.
Dr. Robson?
I wanna circle back to the family engagement part and I'm, I'm glad that that's included in there because the, the family engagement policy that we're in the process of developing is a crucial piece to the success and sustainability of this, of this effort. If we don't have the, the, the parent buy-in and the family buy-in, we're not gonna be successful at it. And this provides a framework for the administration to create the systems to engage the families. And I can see it's a work in progress. It's just not gonna snap your fingers and say that happens, but I, I look forward to the conversations concerning that too. Thank you.
It'll be a continuation. That's why we wanted to do it with this level of depth today to kick off because I know the board is saying, well, we keep hearing focus school, we keep hearing redesign, what does it look like? So this is what redesign looks like. It's not pretty and sexy and cool and all of that.
It will when the kids' scores start to...
The work, the work will still be about, about the basics.
I do have a quick question that, but does any, do you have the data on how many schools were accredited in fourteen? Yeah, we had thirty-nine in fifteen, fifty-one percent.
You're like thirty-nine percent.
In, in fifteen.
It's in the twenties.
I have it, Brad. I, I have it.
Okay, and the reason I'm saying is, is this is the growth that we've seen year after year after year that certain stakeholders choose to, or don't understand or don't see. And we've seen, that was a twenty-four percent improvement from, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. It's pretty phenomenal.
It is. But let me give you the sobering piece that I keep in my mind as I do this work. In two thousand nine, we had forty-four accredited.
Well, unfortunately, the standards changed since it's like hitting a moving target. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that. I'm not making excuses.
No, but, but, but I'm saying too, it's about how we approach the work.
Right.
And, and we know a lot of things happen, but that's, that's our mindset. And so we know that we can get there with the right infrastructure to make it happen.
Just keep doing it. I think you're doing it.
This model that focus schools was presented to us, it's being used in other districts that have challenged schools. And how long did they, how long did it take to see turnarounds in these, in these divisions using this model?
Couple of things. Focus school, I had never heard of focus schools when I worked in Norfolk, so, but this was the work that we were doing in our own way, when we were working with the Panasonic Foundation, ways in which we thought about teaching and learning along with the Council of Great City Schools. So this is how we built our infrastructure for success. Research is very clear. First of all, focus schools in the panacea. They aren't gonna get us from A to B unless we do A to B well, unless we commit to it, define it, monitor it, improve it. Research is very, very clear that systemic turnaround as well as school turnaround takes three to five years of consistent effort, implementation, monitoring, adjustments. And the three to five years represents when you first get that breakthrough moment in terms of getting close to accreditation or being accredited. And then the breakthrough that the three to five gets and, and beyond is how do you sustain it? So it, and that's why time is, is so critically important. It, it doesn't happen overnight. Now, we're gonna see some schools that were in the bubble perhaps, excuse me, with this year and certainly by next year, see some real jumps because they were almost there and they just needed a little more way, a little more time and figuring out their own connectedness, I'm thinking about it. And you're gonna see some real movement in some schools, including our schools that have already been successful. Because again, this isn't just for some, this is for the entire district. A school that's been accredited for years still has places to grow.
Just one last question. We know that the state is in the process of changing how they measure these schools. And do you anticipate that this model will fit well with what the state is going to require with, of us? Will we, will, it would seem to me that, given the, the components that we heard from the superintendent of state this, this past month, that this model will, will help us. Could you comment on that?
The state has in its toolbox all aspects of what we're doing in focus schools. What they haven't been able to master is how to move it from a compliance check or less into the actions of how people around it. So for them, I learned one year, I think Kip shared with me, we were having PD with the state on some of this work and they're walking around with a clipboard seeing who had it done and who hadn't. That's compliance. That isn't about letting people learn through the process. It's an expectation, we deliver, you do. That's, that's sit and get, that doesn't get you there. What I know about school turnaround was about school turnaround and not necessarily about what the state wanted us to do. But I believe and I know that the method of turnaround that we're approaching, not school improvement for a score... school improvement for a score, all of this will allow us to be successful in that, whatever that final rubric looks like.
Yeah.
In terms of success. One of the things that will still be required for us is to show improvement in the lowest five percent of schools in the state. And Norfolk has some, our priority schools fall within the lowest five percent of the state. In the new ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, that's still required for each state to, to address improvement and turnaround for that level of schools. So our work, we still have to document our work, and so that you know, the state also has their whatever, what do they call those OPs?
Yes.
What does that stand for?
I don't know what the OP stands for.
The Virginia Office of School Improvement, Approved Personnel.
Well, anyway, thank you all. But anyhow, and this is not about my team, this is about the state. They have these folks that are supposed to come in and, and monitor what the school turnaround partner, the lead turnaround partners are doing. And so if you don't know what you're looking for, you don't know what turnaround looks like, how are you monitoring? Because these are the same folks that were monitoring the folks that we put out. So we, we go through the motions. I play in the sandbox because we've got to get through the state accreditation and accountability system. But I'm going to be very clear, what I've said directly to the state superintendent, and I'm, will say it again publicly, while I have to meet the expectations for the state board to say the schools are showing progress, what's not negotiable for me is how we do it. Because as I said to the state superintendent, of all the changes that Norfolk had, the one constant was the fact that the State Department was there. And if that would have made a difference, we should have seen more progress. Because they were the ones with their model that was here. Additionally, you shouldn't have seen more schools in the state fall into that level.
We're going to be the lead turnaround partner.
I say it to him publicly, so.
Okay.
That's the word.
I don't have to be a bad guy anymore, it's so nice.
Boom Consulting.
So I, just a couple of things. So what I'd like to ditto what Dr. Robinson and Ms. Wagner were saying in terms of the family and community engagement piece, and hoping that we will see the alignment between our policy and the regulations in that work. Something Ms. Basine would have said if she had finished alignment with our board accountability system.
Absolutely.
And making sure that whatever comes here flows appropriately into that.
And if I could, let a pause on that. It's the accountability system is the driving what we monitor.
That drives it.
Okay, so we're using that as our framework.
And then Dr. Gamer noted the vertical alignment piece, and I also made a note, because when you, at least on quick glance of the fifteen schools that were in denied status, it looked like twelve of them were a part of some vertical pathway where they were feeding into each other. And then I, my question is, going back to the comment around professional development and urban leadership. So what, what does that mean? What's, what's unique about what you feel you are providing our leaders in terms of urban leadership versus whatever is not urban?
It's regular leadership, and that's a great question, Mr. Jordan. One of the things that I've learned at the Council of Great City Schools about the differences between the urban school leader and a non-urban school leader is just being aware of the diversity that is more often than not in an urban school setting than in a rural school setting. Being sensitive to different communities' needs, different families' needs, and being able to access resources for those families who may just need different than in a rural setting. So in that context, being aware of that. To your point, when you look at the fifteen schools and you identify certain feeder patterns, those schools and those feeder patterns have very different needs from schools in another feeder pattern. So as an urban school leader, you have to be hypersensitive to the story behind the data. And sometimes, you know, numbers don't tell the whole story, that you have to dig a little deeper and realize that, you know, the kids that come to you with certain challenges that you don't necessarily have control over, but as an urban school leader, you do need to be aware of them, sensitive to it, and take that into consideration as you're trying to provide instruction for them.
And I think the other piece that I would add to that is the fact that there is no way of teaching urban students. As I often say to people, urban represents a housing pattern, a living pattern, more density, but it also represents what are the, the resources and the enrichment opportunities that are available in an urban setting? There are, theater, athletics, all of those things that make a great deal of sense. So urban represents a, a, a pattern of living. Some folks out there making millions of dollars off of the secret sauce for urban students. Secret sauce is giving them the same quality education, the same rigorous education that any other student has outside of the urban setting.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's what happened. I mean, that's why the, the Ruby Payne work drives me crazy, because it's not, it does nothing but perpetuate stereotypes about students and groups of students and does nothing to, to advance the work. I'm an African-American woman who prefers colors. You all barely see me in a black or brown or black suit, or a blue suit, right? Doesn't mean that that's about, so, so if I like colors, so then how do you leverage an engaging classroom if color is what goes on? It means nothing. And so for me, when I talk about urban leadership, I talk about understanding that students in urban environments need the exact same opportunities for education that students in suburban settings and in private schools access.
Amen.
I was like, now we are having those crucial conversations.
Okay, so we're going to move the, whatever, the Educational Planning Steering Committee update to the Decision Agenda section, right before Board Matters and the Business Meeting. And if there's no other questions or comments from the board or Dr. Boone or your team, we'll, we'll break, but if you want to also acknowledge the rest of the team.
I do, I want to acknowledge all from the district leadership team as well as academic affairs, because we're truly doing this together. So I want to thank their, thank them for their leadership.
Anything else from anyone on the board?
All right, thank you very much. We, we appreciate that, and I think it would be fair to say the board would like more of these.
Okay.
Where we get an opportunity to actually see some of the work and discuss it, and the examples is very helpful for us and helps to feed into the work that we're doing. So we will break and reconvene in the...
In ten minutes?
In about thirteen minutes, over in the, over in the boardroom. So this section, portion is adjourned.